Good to see you again. So at this point, this Arizona Mist Ball, I think we just have.
Nobody left their phone in the basket. You have all your phones?
Secretary, please call the role.
Commissioner Kwak.
Present.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Klop.
Here.
Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Commissioner Nating.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Chair Strongman.
Here.
Moving on to item two, the consent calendar, and I believe we do not have anything on the consent calendar.
Yes.
Which in that case, we will move on to public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments, for items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the commission cannot act on any of these issues raised during the public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made for questions posed, requests, clarification, or refer the items to staff. Do we have any members of the public willing to make comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our, item four, our public hearings. And the first public hearing, the applicant has withdrawn the Renad Short Term Rental Conditional Use Permit Applications, number Y 23092. So we will go on to the next item, which is Project Residential Mixed Use Objective Standards and Updates to the Design Review Process, Zoning, Text Amendments, Locations, All Throughout the City. So we'll start out with a staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Strongman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Janine Cavalli. I'm a senior planner here with the city of Walnut Creek. And I've been coordinating the update to our design review residential and mixed use design standards and guidelines. And I'm pleased to be presenting to you an update on that project alongside some zoning code amendments that we'll be going through that update, our development standards, and propose revisions to the design review process. So I'll begin this evening's presentation with a project overview, including project history, purpose, and process. And I'm here with other members of our project team, including Alessandra Lundin of Ramey &amp; Associates. And she'll be presenting to you this evening the residential and residential mixed use design guidelines and standards book. And in addition, I have with me Ben Schuster, an associate planner with the city. And he'll be presenting the proposed changes to the design review process. And after the presentation, we will all be available to answer any questions you may have. So we began the project back in 2019 to respond to changes in state law, which I'll touch on a bit more in the coming slides, that speak to a requirement for objectively written standards. The project began as an update to our design review standards and guidelines, which was fairly outdated. It was created in 1996. And as the project progressed, state law continued to evolve, and the project's scope also continued to evolve. And so it included not only looking at that 1996 book, but in addition, taking a look back at our zoning, ensuring that standards were objectively written. And then also during, as we progressed in the project, we received some new direction from city council to take a look at our design review process, particularly look at permit streamlining, and the creation of, to promote the creation of new housing, and also be consistent with these recent changes to state law. So I've already mentioned state law a few times, so what do I mean when I say that? So the next couple of slides will give you a little bit of the historical legislative context, and some of the council direction that we've received that sets the framework for this effort. So back in 2018, Senate Bill 35 first introduced this concept of objective design standards. But at that time, it was only for projects with affordable housing units. And so at that time, staff did propose, and then council subsequently adopted, an addendum to the 1996 guidelines to include some objectively written standards, primarily for multi, or mixed use projects, because the 1996 book didn't really contemplate mixed use at the time. And then in 2019, SB 330 expanded the scope of objective design standards to also address market rate and multifamily housing units. We then were awarded a grant in 2020 to help fund the effort to prepare these objective design standards. And then in 2021 was the first time that council identified permit streamlining as one of the city council's top priorities. And subsequently, that has been identified in every subsequent year since then. In 2022, Senate Bill 9 further streamlined single-family residential approvals. And the following year, council adopts an SB 9 ordinance, which requires the creation of objective design standards for architectural compatibility. So that was then folded into the document before you this evening. And then lastly, in July of last year, council gave direction to revise the design review process and the role of the design review commission, and looking at making it an advisory body instead of a decision-making body. So a little bit more about objective design standards. SB 330 affords streamlining to eligible housing projects that meet all objective standards. So whether the objective standard is in the zoning code, in the general plan, or in this, in a design review standards and guidelines book, any project that is residential or residential mixed use with at least two-thirds of the area devoted to residential must comply with these objective standards in order to be afforded that streamlining under SB 330. So it's become very important to ensure that our standards, our design standards and our development standards are objectively written, so that they can be applied to new projects. So what do I mean when I say development standards versus design standards? So under the purview of the Planning Commission, I'm sure you're familiar with development standards, those that are in the zoning ordinance, that not just set the requirements for land use, but height setbacks, parking ratios, floor area ratios, so a lot of the like overall amounts of the like developable area. Whereas the design review standards and guidelines look a little bit more at the how does something, what does it look like, how is it designed? And so those get into more details of the elements of the building, elements of the site, of the landscaping. So it's looking at, you know, materials, locations of where these things are located, and the like. So the various documents that I'm going to talk about, the first is the residential and residential mixed use design standards and guidelines document. And again, that's attachment one in your booklet. So the objectives for this project are to clarify the city's expectations for design of projects. So when a new project comes through, we're being very explicit and clear about what the expectations are for design in the city. And that also helps with streamlining. It's anticipated to reduce the amount of, you know, back and forth rounds of revisions if the city makes those expectations more clear. So updating the 1996 design standards and guidelines, as I mentioned, and really focus on a lot of, on any gaps. So we did do a gap analysis, and as I identified earlier, mixed use was definitely one of the gaps in the 1996 book, that we did a fair amount of research and make sure that the new book addresses. We also wanted to modernize, look at best practices, and prioritize standards for residential and residential mixed use. As I mentioned, that's what's drive, really drove this project to begin with, to be in compliance with state law. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we did receive a state grant. So we are striving to meet our grant deadline, which requires us to complete the project in September of this year. So currently, the 1996 guidelines and standards is a single book. But as we worked to consider the future and understanding that there are now different requirements for residential versus commercial projects, we decided to split that out into two books. And so the first book being the residential and residential mixed use, which is again the one that we're bringing forward this evening. And then we'll be following up at a later date with the book that's focused on non-residential projects. So this slide sort of highlights a number of the differences between that 1996 version of the standards and guidelines and the one that's being presented this evening. We not only wanted the standards to be clear and objectively written, but also just the overall format of the document to be more user-friendly, and to incorporate more photos, graphics, and tables and other things, tools that help visualize, visually communicate the standards. As I mentioned earlier, we did a gap analysis. This list here are some of those items. They also include things like outdoor dining, which has become, especially since the pandemic, the more important and prevalent type of land use and activity in our, especially in our downtown, that we want to make sure we have appropriate standards for. And then also, we found a number of duplications of language between that book and what was in the zoning and other documentation. So we not only looked just within the focus of that document, but other documents that touch on the same topics to make sure we weren't being duplicative, redundant, or perhaps inconsistent, so we were doing cleanup as well. So in the drafting of this document, we did an extensive process of vetting the various standards and guidelines. We started with a social media contest, asking people what they were, what elements of buildings downtown excited or interested them. We did a number of developer forum meetings and stakeholder focus groups. We also established a city working group that was comprised of two design review commissioners. One was an architect, the other a landscape architect. And we had regular meetings with them, as well as city staff from our engineering department, our planning department, and engineering, I didn't say that already, current planning, sorry. And so we met regularly and really just went line by line, looked at every word, every sentence in those standards, and vetted them very thoroughly. And so I think, you know, everyone in the DRC seemed pretty confident with the document when we presented it to them back in May. So I'm now going to hand it over to Alessandra to kind of dig into the sort of cover-to-cover of what's in that document.
All right. Good evening, Chair Strongman and members of the commission. As Janine mentioned, I'm going to walk through some more of the kind of high-level details of the content of the objective design standards. So as you see here, this is the high-level table of contents. Chapters two through seven apply to multifamily and residential mixed use developments, and include site planning, architecture and building design, outdoor spaces, parking, walls and fences, and lighting. And then chapter eight applies to single-family residential homes. And chapter nine applies to kind of those missing middle housing types, so duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and townhomes. And then finally, chapter 10 has some compatibility standards for SB 9 units. So each chapter contains a number of design topics. And this slide kind of demonstrates the structure for each design topic or section. So each begins with a brief intent statement, and that kind of explains the overall purpose, followed by the list of standards and guidelines for that topic area. So again, we covered this a little bit, but standards are objectively written priority design criteria that all projects must follow, and they're written with shall statements. Whereas the design guidelines are strongly recommended design criteria with which projects should comply, but they're not strictly mandatory. And there is some flexibility there on how projects meet each guideline, depending on unique or differing, you know, project circumstances. And guidelines are written with should statements. And then this, or I'll back up and say, per state law, clear and objective standards are defined as involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official, and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark. So to provide kind of an example of what we mean by a standard, or a clear and objective standard versus a guideline, we have here a standard versus a guideline for lighting. So as you can see here, the standard would be pedestrian-oriented lighting, not taller than 16 feet in height, shall be placed along pedestrian paths, multi-use paths, and other walkways at minimum intervals of every 40 feet. And by contrast, a guideline might say pedestrian-oriented lighting should be placed at regular intervals, and it should be, the height should be appropriate for the setting. But what does regular intervals mean? What does appropriate height mean? Those are very subjective. That means something very different to different people. It's also important to note that not all standards can be turned into, or sorry, not all standards and guidelines can be turned into clear and objective standards, which is why there are still some of these guidelines that are sprinkled throughout the document. And they speak again to that kind of larger intent. And this is because sometimes it's just not possible to develop a clear metric for some of these, or to evaluate them in that way because of, you know, varying site circumstances or conditions, or potentially even outside agency requirements. But again, to get back to, you know, this issue of flexibility versus being strictly clear and objective, we wanted to build in some of that design flexibility through the standards. And so for many of them, we've provided a menu of options to choose from. So in this example, for treatment of corner buildings, we say, okay, you can meet the standard by including at least two, you know, special corner treatments. And then we give them this menu, and they can choose two from the list. And again, that's kind of how we Um, and again, that's kind of how we build some more flexibility, um, into these clear and objective standards. So now I'm going to walk through some of the high level, um, contents and topics and the types of standards we have under each. So under site design, um, it covers access and circulation, uh, services, um, service refuse and utilities and landscaping. So for instance, under access and circulation, we have standards for creating smaller blocks and new connections, um, minimizing curb cuts and driveways, um, to reduce conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles and creating pedestrian pathways that are connected to, you know, parking and bike, um, parking and outdoor spaces. Um, we have standards that address the location and screening of services, utilities and equipment areas to minimize their impact on the pedestrian experience. And for landscaping, we have, um, standards that address minimum size and spacing of trees and shrubs. We have some limitations on turf and, uh, some guidelines, um, on drought tolerant landscaping, um, as well as stormwater management standards. Under parking, um, this chapter includes standards such as locating parking to the rear and sides of buildings, creating pedestrian routes through parking areas, screening surface and structured parking from public view, and also ensuring that surface parking lots have trees and landscaping. And then the lighting chapter, um, includes provision and design of pedestrian scaled lighting and limitations on light trespass onto adjoining properties, just among others. And then for outdoor spaces, um, that chapter is broken into three sections. So they address each of the three different types of outdoor spaces. Um, publicly accessible outdoor spaces such as plazas, private common outdoor spaces that are shared by all building residents. So that would be, for instance, a courtyard or roof deck in a multifamily building. And then private personal outdoor spaces such as individual balconies. And each of these include minimum dimensions, um, for those outdoor spaces. And then additionally, for publicly accessible outdoor spaces and private common outdoor spaces, we have minimum landscaping requirements, um, as well as, um, requirements for minimum amenities that we want to see in those spaces such as seating, shade structures, um, uh, you know, play structures, et cetera. And then under building design, um, this chapter includes standards that focus on portions of the, uh, portions of the building visible from the street, public realm and outdoor spaces and includes standards, um, such as required articulation and modulation to kind of mediate the scale and massing of buildings, providing weather protection and accentuating entries, encouraging a variety of materials and colors that really add visual interest to a building. Standards that, that address the design of the ground floor, whether it be a residential ground floor or a retail commercial storefront. As Janine mentioned, we have some outdoor dining standards for, um, outdoor dining on private property. And then we also have a set of neighborhood compatibility standards that address appropriate transitions um, from higher density development to lower density development. And then lastly, um, I mentioned previously, chapters eight, nine and ten have standards, um, for single family homes, those missing middle housing types and also SB nine. So in addition to having very similar standards regarding kind of site design and building design, but, you know, again tailored to those smaller, um, house type building forms, we also, um, address topics such as townhome configuration on a site, landscaping of, uh, private streets and pathways, um, garage doors, transitions and privacy, and, um, again, that SB nine unit compatibility with the primary unit. And with that, I will turn it back over to Janine.
So now I'm going to move us back into the realm of zoning amendments. I'll go over very briefly, briefly the development standards and the topics that we're amending there before I hand it over to Ben, that will speak to the design review process amendments that are proposed. So this slide here, um, identifies the, the topics, um, of the set of proposed development standards that are in your packet. Um, we prepared these while we were working to make our design guidelines and standards more objective. It became apparent that some of them, as we rewrote them to be more objective and clear, really fit better within our zoning code, and so that's what, what these items are here. Um, so for example, um, some of the landscaping standards, um, were not clear at all. Um, so we needed to set some minimum amounts, while others might have just said, the designer view commission will set the minimum landscaping amount. And so I, now that, now we need to be more clear of what, what's to be expected. Um, so parking and loading, we have some new provisions for both passenger and non-passenger loading zones, um, where there's multifamily unit developments. We have some of the lighting that Alessandra was speaking to was more about like the fixture height. The ones in the zoning code are more about the actual minimum, um, amount of illumination in certain areas so that they feel more safe. We also have some new screening requirements around fences and walls and primarily what are some of the allowed or prohibited materials. Um, and then these last two items are really, um, it's not new content, it's content that's being moved from the two thousand eighteen addendum that I mentioned earlier to the zoning code. So now I'm going to hand it over to Ben.
Oh, thanks, Janine. Um, Ben Schuster, Community Development. Going to be talking tonight about the designer review process and just wanted to acknowledge, we're going through a lot of materials, so thank you all for hanging in there. Uh, I think we're over, over halfway at this point, so a few more minutes. So, uh, how is designer review changing? Uh, we're doing a number of things. These are kind of the high level overview of what's happening. Essentially, uh, we've incorporated new roles and responsibilities for various bodies. Uh, we're proposing new categories of designer review. Um, we're codifying, uh, project review thresholds that have existed, um, since the nineteen seventies out of a designer review commission, um, resolution. And then we've kind of done a top to bottom reorganization of the designer review article for clarification and ease of use. So, uh, new designer review categories, uh, we're proposing three here. Um, and go left to right here, ministerial, objective and then discretionary. So ministerial designer review, uh, is, uh, designed to, um, uh, uh, for, for state housing law projects like Janine mentioned earlier, for example, Senate Bill thirty-five. These are required by the state to be ministerially approved without discretion, um, without public hearing. Um, and so any such project under this type of designer review would be done by the community development director, AKA staff. I do want to note that this is very rare, um, in, you know, the past six, seven years that these, uh, bills have been around. The city has had, uh, two such projects subject to ministerial review. Uh, looking at objective designer review, um, this is again, kind of based out of state housing law. Chief among those, Senate Bill three thirty, again, Janine touched on that previously, requires the use of objective standards to review qualifying projects, which are residential or residential mixed use projects. Um, and here, the approving body has some limited discretion um, insofar as, um, a project can be denied, um, based on a narrow set of health and safety findings that's outlined by the state. And then the final category we have is discretionary designer review. Uh, think of this as kind of what we have today essentially, um, and, and it's been designed in that way to match as close as possible. This applies to all our commercial projects in the city um, or any residential project that, um, opts out of objective designer view through, um, the inability or desire to not meet an objective standard, they want to do something different, or they're requesting, um, like a variance, for example, from a development standard in the zoning code. And so this gives the city and the approving body the, uh, most discretion over a project. Then moving on to, um, our existing, well, not existing, but proposed, uh, review thresholds. So I mentioned the designer review commission in nineteen seventy-seven, I believe, uh, issued a resolution delegating some of their designer review authority to staff, uh, for small minor projects. Um, and on the left-hand side here is kind of a representative list of what those projects are. Uh, kind of the primary projects we've seen, um, over the years has been those kind of small additions to residential projects or minor new residential construction such as a custom single family home um, and then commercial storefront remodels. And so then by extension, uh, major projects is everything else that's not on that list. Um, and those would typically be subject to the planning commission's approval. So we are asking the commission tonight, uh, for their input on a potential change to those thresholds. The city council, as part of their, uh, direction to staff in July twenty twenty-three, uh, did not ask staff to, um, consider revisions to the review thresholds. But we do feel like there are some potential revisions that can be made, um, that would help kind of relieve some of the, um, approval, uh, burden of the planning commission, given that this is a new responsibility of this commission, while still staying true to, um, council's direction of keeping, uh, staff's review for smaller projects. And so, uh, this change you see on your screen, uh, would be one proposal that we're again asking for you to weigh in on tonight. Um, basically would extend staff's, uh, review purview for remodels or small additions to, uh, any sized residential development instead of limiting that to just, uh, small residential products of four units or less. So, uh, kind of putting it all together, um, we have here a table, this is found, I believe, on page five of your staff reports. Um, so I've put it up here as well, um, planning commission is called out there in orange for you. Kind of key takeaways from this table, um, the designer review commission, the DRC, uh, now becomes an advisory only body, um, to the planning commission. The planning commission now assumes the bulk of the, uh, designer review authority previously held by the designer review commission, um, as well as the city council, which had on very rare cases, some designer view approval granted to them. Uh, the zoning administrator now has a role in the designer view process where they did not previously. Um, and that's given to them through a process that we're proposing to basically roll up, uh, designer view approvals, um, to the highest reviewing body when it's tied with another entitlement. So for example, when a designer view application comes in with a variance, a variance is, uh, heard by the zoning administrator, we're proposing that the zoning administrator now hear the variance and the designer view, uh, approval in one meeting. And then lastly, the city council will now become the appeals body, uh, for all planning commission decisions, as, as they are today. So how does this impact you? So, um, I'm sure you're all curious. So we took a look at the last four years of designer review approvals, so that's January twenty twenty to December twenty twenty-three. In that time period, uh, the city approved a total of a hundred and seventy-four designer review applications. Sixty-seven of those were approved by the designer review commission and a hundred and seven of those were approved by staff. And so the planning commission would, for the most part, pick up those sixty-seven, um, designer review applications approved by the DRC. You average that out over four years, you get about seventeen, uh, projects per year. Now I'm going to walk you through, uh, four quick examples, real world examples that have come in over the last few years, um, kind of get a sense of, um, kind of the projects we're seeing and then also how the process may or may not, uh, change based under our proposed, uh, framework. So this is a Wendy's, um, I believe it's on, uh, Treaton, Maine. Uh, came in sometime last year for designer view, it's a, uh, they just wanted to essentially refresh their storefront. Uh, today, that is a staff level designer view given to staff by, uh, the delegations of authority. And under the new system, we would classify this as a minor project, subject to discretionary designer view. What it amounts to is there's no change to the designer view, uh, approval process, uh, the applicant wouldn't even notice a change. Second example here is a small residential development, three detached condos. Um, they requested a variance and then some tree removals. And so you can see here, the zoning administrator, um, does the variance, the minor subdivision and the tree removals, and then it went back to staff for designer view. Again, staff reviewed this because it was under four units, four new units. Under our proposed process, the, uh, again, as I previously mentioned, the zoning administrator now picks up the designer view, um, as part of the overall approval process, and so it just goes to one meeting. Third example here, Primrose Preschool, this is currently under construction, I believe, in the Orchard Shopping Center. They were seeking designer view approval and a conditional use permit, so this body did see them at some point. That approval process, the, it went to the DRC for a study session, went to the planning commission for, uh, approval of the use permit, and then it went back to the DRC for final designer view. Again, under the proposed process, uh, the DRCD still gets an opportunity to weigh in and provide their design comments, um, at a study session. And then it comes to you as the planning commission, where you would act upon both the conditional use permit and the designer view application. And then finally, this is, uh, nineteen ten North Main, it's a residential mixed use development, I believe over by the Target here in downtown. And, uh, they only needed, uh, designer view and some tree removals. So they went to the DRC, got everything there. Under the new system, the DRC sees them as a study session, and then it goes again to this body because they are a major project, a major residential project. And you would act upon the designer view and the tree removals. Um, and this project would be subject to objective designer view because it is a, uh, residential project. And finally, just a little bonus here, administrative alignment, um, just one slide, I promise. So as we were kind of going through this very comprehensive code cleanup, uh, basically up and down the entire municipal code, we realized this is a great time to do a little low hanging fruit cleanup. As you may be aware, the community development department reorganized, uh, the planning manager position has been replaced by the assistant community development director position, which, uh, Sung here has filled. And so basically, it was just a find and replace, uh, where the code mentions the title planning manager, we substituted it for community development director, um, and did that dozens and dozens of times. Not particularly related to designer view, but again, just a, a quick and easy code cleanup that we wanted to include here. And so now I'm going to give it back to Janine, who's going to take us home.
All right, so I'm going to touch on what the next steps are. Um, so again, this evening's meeting is a study session and, uh, we will be back. Our tentative date is April twenty-fifth, where we will be looking for a recommendation to council for adoption of the proposed zoning amendments. Then we'll be doing some more work on the non-residential book that I mentioned earlier, and that comes back to you in the summer. Um, and then in between that, um, the, um, we would be taking to city council in May, both the residence or residential mixed use design review standards and guidelines for adoption, and then also the, um, requests for the amendments to the zoning code. So the recommended action this evening for the planning commission is to receive the draft designer view standards and guidelines document and to review and provide feedback to staff on the proposed zoning code amendments listed here and to provide input on the threshold for staff designer review that Ben mentioned earlier, um, which would expand the definition of, of minor projects and then would therefore go to staff a level designer review. and then would therefore go to staff a level designer view. So that concludes our presentation. And we are here and happy to answer any questions you may have about anything we presented or anything that's in your packet.
Thank you for a very detailed exhaustive presentation. We are in a study session, so we will ask, start asking questions of our staff right now on any of these topics, and then we'll turn it over and have a public hearing first. Okay, who would like to start? Commissioner Ward.
Okay, yeah, thank you for all of this. It looks like there's a lot of detailed work, and we really appreciate it. I can tell you search and replace is not just search and replace, though. So I'm not, I'm not buying that in terms of the work you did with regard to that. I did have a question, though, you know, how does it affect me, right? You know, that's what I want to know. You said you took 2023, basically, to look at the number of design review projects that were done there. But I think our experience has been, as a commission, that we had quite a slowdown due to COVID for projects. And I'm wondering if you feel like that time period is a reasonable sample for the...
Yeah, let me clarify. It was a time period of four years from 2020 to 2023. And so it was the average, oh, okay.
Still, still kind of that sweet spot of COVID. You know, I know we had, we had a lot of meetings canceled. There weren't a lot of projects coming through. You know, it's all, it's all, you know, I guess I shouldn't say guessing. There's estimating, perhaps a better word, but...
Yeah, that was the data that was most easily accessible to us, but we can go back and follow up with looking at some other, maybe pre-COVID years to get a better sense.
Yeah, I don't know, you go back too far, and then it loses relevance for that reason, too. So I'm just, I guess I'm just highlighting the issue, I'm wondering about that. I also am wondering with the reorganization, are you anticipating that we're going to need additional staffing for the zoning administrator position? Or is that just kind of a reorganization of duties somehow?
No, the zoning administrator is fulfilled by a variety of staff in community development.
So it's not just one person now saddled with additional work. It's more of a, just a functional title for what's going on there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Somebody else?
Thank you. Couple of questions about kind of the process and how this connects up to the state requirements. I noticed in some of the categories, there would be a number of standards, maybe half as many guidelines. Some would be about the same number, some would be a few more guidelines. Since the state is trying to get us into an objective, you know, situation, when you have an equal number of guidelines or even more guidelines than you have standards, how does that sit with the state as far as, are we really being objective? Or are we just kind of shuffling the easy part over to standards and still keeping a lot of discretion in the guidelines?
So the way that I would answer that question is, we, I wish I knew the page number of that 1996 document, I could probably look it up. But we do have a lot more objectively-written standards in the proposed document significantly more. I would say that that initial document was primarily guidelines, and the standards that were in there were not objectively-written. So we're, we have made a big transition and evolution to primarily objective. And the guidelines, those don't necessarily apply to projects that are eligible for the SB 330 project as much as, like, those aren't required. The objective ones are what's required. So I don't think that we've reduced the number of objective standards, if that's, we've significantly increased, if that answers your question.
I understand that, I'm just wondering if it's enough.
Oh, enough. Yeah, I was, I think I was just going to add to what Janine said and say, well, we focused the objective standards on really those priority design criteria that we really want to see. And then I feel like the guidelines are a little bit of a bonus, right? It's like, this is a nice-to-have, but it's not, it's not a deal breaker, right? It's not, it's not so important that we have to see those necessarily with every project.
The next question is about variances. So I assume that variances are sort of in the same situation they are now, which is you can ask for, you know, suspension of some rule or another, or standard guideline, I suppose. If there's some justification that, you know, your project is different than others and deserves a kind of a different look from what the standard is, is that still possible with the objective standards? If it says 400 feet before you have to have an opening in a building, you know, what if it's 420 because that block is, you know, 850 feet wide?
Right, so in terms of the objective design standards, you either meet them all and you follow the objective designer view process, or if you don't meet one, then you are in the discretionary process. Just to make it real simple.
Which leads me right to my next question.
Okay.
I was looking at the ministerial and objective and discretionary. And my first question was, does that mean, you know, once you've categorized, you know, is the entire project objective or ministerial? Or can there be parts of it which are ministerial? And parts, you know, parts of it are objective and parts of it are discretionary? That, you know, you've met, for example, there are some simple things that, you know, it's easy for the staff to say, yeah, check that box. There's other things that, you know, you really want to take a close look and see if the standard has been applied objectively. And then there may be some things which there's, you know, some guidelines that address it. But it sort of sounds like you're saying, well, given a project has to fall into one of those categories.
Yeah, so if you want the SB 330, if you want to be eligible for SB 330 streamlining, you need to follow every single objective design standard, whether it's a design standard, a development standard, the zoning, a general plan, policy that's objectively-written, everything. As soon as you deviate, then you're not following the SB 330 criteria, and you're not eligible.
And you can think of it this way, that if the project is consistent with objective standards, so it's in the objective designer view path, then the city has, you know, more limited discretion. But let's say if the project thinks, oh, we, you know, we want to make certain changes, we now require a general plan amendment for some reason, then that takes it out of the protection under that objective designer view path. And so, once you're making a change from an objective design standard, then you're not meeting the eligibility for that path.
And I think that's why that makes this slide here all that more important and why we made the decision to incorporate and try to build in flexibility through these menus where you can pick one or two or, to meet the standard. And you have the flexibility of which ones you select.
Okay. Last question is, I'm not sure I understand the thought behind the change in the process. We have design review currently, you know, approving a project for those items. And it only comes to us if there's an appeal. And now that's become a two-step process, where the designer view looks at it and they make an approval, a recommendation. Then we look at it again for an approval. And is that some way to kind of better apply the objective standards? Or is it that you don't trust designer view to really do designer view and not? Let me rephrase that. You know, they're doing designer view and not so much the objective standards, which is kind of how this whole thing started with the state. You know, they wanted to take some of that flexibility away. But is there, I guess I'm trying to figure out why the planning commission gets dropped into the process. It didn't seem necessary before.
So staff, we're directed by a city council to look at changes to the designer view process. We brought to them some options. One of, you know, one of the options was to put more of the authority on staff. One of the options was to keep the designer view commission as is. Another was the options before you today. And so it was city council's direction to staff to pursue the option that we're looking at today. You know, one of the reasons they didn't pick the option of just going to staff, which was one of the options, because ultimately it is, if you meet the objective standard, there really isn't much the designer review commission or this body can do to not approve that project. And so one option was like, let's make it ministerial. It's a checklist, staff looks, and they meet everything that's passed. But council wanted to be able to have a body that has that design review, design experience, a body with architects, with landscape architects to review the project. And there are high standards in Walnut Creek for the look and feel of buildings and site design. And so they still felt that that was a value to have. In terms of why not keep it there, one of the reasons was this loop back around. And there became a process where something was approved by planning commission and then not approved by designer view. And we, council thought that there was, that wasn't a very clear, transparent process or efficient process. And so we were looking at all of those things, clarity, transparency, efficiency. And I don't know if any of my colleagues want to add anything to that.
I think I can add to, you know, one of the intents of revising this process is, you know, you still, the city still wants to keep input about designer view. And one of the ways to do that is through the objective standards, you're quantifying or you're, you know, making objective the design features that you want, and also from the inputs of design guidelines and from the designer view commission. So you have that component. And the other thing is that, under the SB 330 revised rules, if a project meets the objective standards and they have a complete application, the city has to go through the process of approving or denying the project within five meetings. And that includes all the meetings of the city bodies and any, you know, workshops or study sessions and appeals. And so the city is trying to respond to that. And, you know, that's an eventual response that the city needs to have to be able to fit within that timeframe of factoring and, you know, any potential appeals or continuances of the project. So that's kind of the idea behind that change.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Okay, I have a few minor questions about the actual, the booklet itself. Going through it, a couple of things struck me as maybe missing or somewhere else in the municipal code. For example, cell transmitters are now being put throughout neighborhoods. Do we have any design say on that, or is that? Cell transmitters.
We don't have any standards.
Maybe we need something in there.
Was the question, does this, I'm sorry, Chip Griffin, Principal Planner?
Basically, I didn't see anything specifically in the document on cell transmitters.
I don't believe this book includes anything to do with the cell industry, cellphone industry at all.
Is it somewhere else in our municipal code, then?
We do have, in fact, we're taking a look at that ordinance as well and clean, because there's a lot of state law that we need to abide by as well. Because it's, which has taken away a lot of local control. So we need to clean that up. We need to take a policy paper that we have and codify it.
Okay, thank you. Next question is also electronic, is evidently electric vehicle chargers are now being attached to the outside of dwellings. Do we have anything on that, or do we have any design on that? Or do we need some design on that?
We didn't contemplate that, but I think, I know that Raimi has done a lot of objective standards elsewhere. Have you seen that? We have. I haven't actually seen any standards that speak to the design of individual EV charging on a home, like on a single-family home. We have gotten questions about this before, more for multifamily and provision of EV charging within multifamily buildings, which is, you know, there are provisions in the California Green Building Code already for EV charging and wiring for multifamily projects and commercial buildings. But yeah, I'm trying to think, I haven't seen them. That's not to say, in my own neighborhood, I have seen some interesting setups where people who don't have an EV, like, they don't have a garage, run an extension cord across the sidewalk and lug in their car on the street, which is not great, but yeah, I haven't actually seen anything specifically.
So yeah, that's something that we could look at if you direct us to do that.
And one thing that kind of, I don't like artificial turf. And I saw that several references through there. Is there a way we could not have that? I'll take gravel, I'll take dirt, I'll take anything.
Yeah, we do have it limited, like, dog parks was one of the few areas.
Yeah, we have it limited to more like high-activity areas. So it's supposed to be only for things like dog parks or, you know, sports exercise-type areas where you have a lot of activity and foot traffic, but not for, that's not to say, you know, that the city would want to see artificial turf, you know, replacing people's, you know, front yards or, you know, front setback areas and stuff.
Well, Kaiser Hospital and their courtyard does have artificial turf now. And it's not aesthetically pleasing. So, and finally, can we, the mixed, in order to allow for permit streamlining, can we do something with allowing the mixed-use part of the development to be really mixed-use? Because with my tenure on the commission, I've seen quite a few small projects come through with looking for CUPs. And I go, why do we really need a CUP for that? It's, to me, it fits. And it's, we need to broaden it out a little bit.
So I might need a little bit more clarity on the question. Are you asking for a certain percentage of the land use?
If somebody wants to put a car dealership in, under their why-can't-they or life insurance sales office, I don't think we have enough retail to fill up all of the retail spaces and all of our mixed use. And I think we need to be more broad on that.
Right, so for the scope of this project, we're only looking at physical features, not the land use. So that might be more of a discussion we have when we look at, like, doing a general plan update and a holistic zoning code update. And I know there's an economic strategy out there that was adopted recently in the last year or so. That does touch exactly on that. So I know that that will be one of the documents that's considered when we do do that general plan update, which looks at land use or takes a, you know, a fresh look at the land use.
And if anybody else has...
If I could touch on one more thing about the lawn. I'm just thinking, because that triggered a lot of discussion, the turf, and that's why we limited it. But, you know, sustainability, water use will wade into the equation, which is one of the reasons we didn't want to reject it outright. And then maintenance, you know, a lot of times when there is a real lawn, it's not maintained. Or it might be in an unusual shape or slope. And so those tend to be better suited for artificial turf.
Okay, thank you. And anybody else have other questions? Yes, go.
This must have been pretty difficult to put together, so I get it. I'm curious. There's, there's been quite a bit of legislation that allows you to turn commercial properties into residential, such as AB 2011, which I understand might have some minor changes in this next legislative session. And I'm not an architect at all, but it's interesting. I was taking a look at some of the development, objective development standards. And I wonder, do they, do they lend itself should someone actually want to do an AB 2011 project? I personally have never done one, and I actually haven't seen very many of them because it's actually very difficult. I think it's, it's not very easy to do. And I'm looking at, like, the courts or the court, the private outdoor space requirement for multifamily. I'm just wondering how in the world, I don't know, it was just, it was just a question. So that's question number one. And then question number two, which is way easier, because I just threw, like, something really big at you. Um, I'm, I, when I saw that threshold, um, going to staff for four, um, well, you had it up here earlier, it was 500 feet, it was new construction for less and then anything less than 500 feet, right? There it is. Well, did this have anything to do with SB nine to, no. Okay, never mind. Because you know how SB nine, you can do four, split the lot, two main, two eight. And I figured, oh, that's why they did that. I was just curious. No? Okay, never mind. I was like, that beautifully, was beautifully integrated with Senate Bill line.
Right. And then to your first question, I mean, a lot of what goes into the standards we're looking at today is the kind of exterior part of the building. And so some of the questions that I think you're talking about, like conversion of use might happen in the interior. Um, but then you did mention courts. I mean, and, you know, one of the things that we've, we have encouraged in the past are just seating areas for office workers or even in the auto sales industry, if you're waiting for your, you know, your car to be serviced or cleaned, um, having, you know, an outdoor space to sit in is nice. So I think that a lot of these things could be repurposed. Specifically, we didn't look at this, this entire document with that in mind, but I do think that there are opportunities that we could be.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I just have one more comment. Um, I'm, so I'm a lawyer and when, it took me way too long to figure out why you were including courts in this entire section. So I just am confessing that right now, but I, I did figure it out eventually, so. Oh, not that kind of court, the other kind of court. Okay, got it now, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a remnant. It was already in our zoning code. We, um, had it applied to multifamily units and mixed use and we just simply wanted to apply it to all multifamily units. At this venture, we didn't take the opportunity to maybe clean up some language or revisit it, so.
No, I mean, I've had a lot of projects I've dealt with that, that used that language. It was, it was my own complete brain freeze. I just thought it was amusing, so.
Last chance. Thank you for all of your very, very hard work for months and possibly years now. We need to have a public hearing opened up for public comment. And if anybody, member of the public, which I don't see too many here, would like to come down and comment on this, we're welcome to come down. Seeing none, we will return it back to the commission. And one of the things we are supposed to give directions to the staff to, for the next thing, um, process, and one is to, our opinion of the, uh, thresholds, thresholds for review, which I believe is the screen we have in front of us.
Yeah. I'll bring that up for you.
Does anyone would like to start on that one?
Make a motion?
Uh, there's no need for a motion. It's basically.
That's right.
What would your comment be then?
Oh.
I have to admit, I'm still trying to get, wrap my head around, um, designer review to the planning commission, then appeal to, um, city council. So I hadn't really focused on how the staff fits into each of those. I, I take it the, the intent was to, given that the objective standards, uh, give a, a cleaner, um, direction for decision. The idea was that more projects could in fact be handled ministerially by the staff. And, and so the question is, was that threshold, when, um, when does the staff say, this doesn't need to go to design review? Is that, is that the question we're trying to answer? What that threshold is?
Ben, do you want to come? Let me go back to that particular slide, um, and clarify, because it is a little confusing. You kind of have to get your head around it. Let me, I have some notes here. Ben, do you want to add anything while I'm looking for my notes? Clarify what it is we're asking.
Yeah, so basically, um, you know, again, we were looking at everything. Um, and so part of the thought process was, you know, staff today already has the authority given to them to approve up to four brand-new residential units. Uh, and thinking about that versus the impact of a small addition, uh, you know, 500 and one square foot addition to a, you know, 200-unit apartment building seemed like, you know, that was kind of, the four units were maybe more of an impact, right? And so this is just kind of a way to, I guess, clean things up, to say, hey, you know, the, the impact here we think is roughly the same. Um, and again, acknowledging that this is all going to be new for the planning commission. And so maybe there's an opportunity here for staff to just alleviate some of, um, the number of projects that come to, uh, this body. Um, you know, as part of our research, we're, we're really not getting that many of these types of projects, like remodels to existing apartment buildings, um, or rather additions. We do get some remodels. Um, and so that, that was kind of the intent behind it, it was just some cleanup.
And if I could clarify a little bit of the cleanup, you'll notice the, the word remodel that was missing. So this adds remodels to the list, not just an addition of 500 square feet or less. And by splitting it out into the, on the right-hand side into two components, the first component, we're, we're not, we're basically saying new construction, um, of four or fewer dwelling units, that stays the same. But what's changing is that remodels or additions of five or more units would also be considered minor. So that's the main change. I don't know if that helps clarify.
So, if someone's building a single-family house or two flats, um, that would be by definition ministerial, that would be staff review?
Yeah, because it fits in the four units or less of, um, new construction. That's the, that's the first category, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions? Do you have any, is that enough direction for you? Have we given you the direction you want looking for?
Um, so we've answered questions and I think now this is the time where if you have any, like, direction on, if you want us to look at anything else, what did we have on the list? Do we have anything on the list?
Can we go back? Can we go back to that slide?
Okay.
Commissioner Ward.
Um, it seems like that we're all, and now that we have more understanding, um, thank you for answering all those questions that, um, I feel like unless people have a, a lot of disagreement, we're pretty impressed with what you've given us here and we think it should be, um, you know, moved along to the next stage, which I think is the council, correct? Um, with perhaps the only, um, exception being that Chair Strongman has suggested maybe looking into the electric vehicle charging station question a little bit, just to see. Um, I mean, I have one on the outside of my townhouse, it's no big deal, but, uh, that's my story, I'm sticking to it. But, um, but I think that, that's certainly a growing area, um, you know, and something to be considered and, you know, there's safety concerns and all kinds of stuff that are folded into that. So I think that would be a good addition, but other than that, I haven't heard anything from any of us that would suggest that there is anything more that you would need to do other than, um, accept our commendation for a job well done and to move it along to the, the council. So that would be my suggestion. Whether that needs to be a motion or just, just a comment, there it is. So maybe we can all give it the thumbs up or something, I don't know.
And the next step would be that the zoning code recommendations to council would come to, back to the planning commission for a formal motion?
Okay.
Okay, let's do that too. That sounds great.
And I guess, thank you. Um, the, so that we've kind of addressed two, one and two. In terms of number three, there was some clarification, um, that we provided. Based on that clarification, do you think that number three is something we should bring forward to council as an option for their consideration?
I believe so, unless somebody disagrees with me.
Let me, let me try to clarify again. Um, so, so, uh, I've, I've got three units to, to build. Um, and I, I bring them to you. Is that, uh, so that goes to a staff review because four, four units or less?
And it does today, so that's not changing. The four units are left of, less of new construction today and what we're suggesting, it's the same.
So, so does the staff review include the option to say, you know, there's, there's some tricky things here in interpreting the objective standards or, or how they're applied here. Um, you know, I think the designer review ought to take a look at this. Is that one of the options or is it, it's simply, you know, because of the, the cutoff, the threshold, it, it falls in your lap and you have to deal with it?
Yeah, so basically, we need to codify very clear thresholds in the code as to whether or not goes to staff or not. Does that answer your question?
What I'm asking is, once it goes to staff, can staff take a look at it and say, uh, you know, this is a little bit more complex or, or there are some policy questions involved or whatever, you know, which is sort of not what you're hoping with the objective standards, but, you know, they don't always work the way you think they might. You know, is there, is there an option to say, um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's possible to, to, the staff can deal with this, but in this case, I think, you know, maybe the designer review should do it? Or is it simply a cutoff?
So that is something that's an option today, um, based on the delegations of authority. Um, the, the planning manager can and has in the past been able to, because of this exact situation you're describing, say, hey, you know, we want the designer review commission to take a look. That option will go away. And so, you know, again, based on, everything needs to be objective, there needs to be very clear objective thresholds for everything, right? And so if we say four, it's four and there's no, uh, the only way the, uh, next body up, which would be this body, would hear that would be on appeal essentially.
So, so essentially then, you, the staff would probably turn the project down by design and the applicant would appeal it to us then?
If they didn't comply with objective standards, we would, you know, we would act in a way that any, any body, any approving body in the city would need to act based on state law, which would be to, again, turn down the project. We would, as we always do, you know, we would work with the applicant and say, hey, you're not meeting this standard, you know, we highly suggest you revise this, otherwise, you know, we're going down this path of, of denial. And, um, you know, we always have that conversation with applicants and we, we want to get to a place of yes, right? And we want to see things built. Um, and more often than not, you know, those changes are, are made.
And, and if they, you know, disagree with you and decide to want to appeal, now would that come directly to us or would that?
Yes.
It would, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have what you need from us now at this point in time?
Hey, I'll dive in again.
Okay.
So again, thank you for that explanation with regard to that. And I think it was a good clarification that the four unit issue was not a change for us at all. Um, and, you know, we, we don't see all of your checklist and analysis that goes on behind that, but we, we, we know it happens. So I think, I, and I think the rest of the commission feel very comfortable with the thresholds that you provided. And again, uh, I would suggest that we recommend that it be moved on to the city council for their review.
Thank you.
I agree.
I agree.
Anyone?
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to, uh, commission considerations. Do we have any?
Reports by staff.
Okay, and moving on to commission members and staff reports. Any commission members have anything? Announcements? Seeing none, we are adjourned.